I'd like to ask my first question, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for another beautiful day in God or King's God. I just pray that you would be in this room tonight, Lord. Bless the decisions that are being made for the future of this community. God be with us as the community prepares for Fall Festival this weekend. Keep everybody safe and allow everybody to make long-lasting memories. It's in your name we pray, amen.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Thank you. I think that is a motion. You can second?
Second.
Brent makes the motion. If he can second, it's almost in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on along to citizens' comments. We normally allow three minutes. We're here to listen to at this point time to listen to comments. We don't take any action at this point. And if you'd like, you can board now if you'd like. I saw somebody get out to stand up, so.
Well, I'm not Karen tonight, so whose name do you want me to write down? Linda Giesman is occupied with a grandson's event, and she asked if I would read this.
Very good.
Put her name down then.
Put your name down. Put your ear. And you can write for Linda, so. Does that mean that I could send the lawyer later to read that sometime? That's my lawyer. If she's watching this, I'm gonna get emailed here.
I'll be good.
Arbor Creek 928 South Wind Circle. Mayor, Council, Staff, good evening. I am Linda Giesman and reside at 201 North Hyden. I wish to express my thoughts on the single trash service. I appreciate that the staff are looking into this. It displays their proactive attitude toward our community. I understand the economics of a single trash service, but I hold dear the right to make my own choices. In this situation, the right to make my own choice outweighs the economics. There are those in our community who have joined as a group to garner a better rate for themselves. May I suggest the staff pursue a plan where the residents in a neighborhood could band together and select their choice of service, similar to what they have done with the water well plan. A company has agreed to dig wells for a certain price where at least eight wells would be dug. The trash service wouldn't have to be just one company, but could be multiple. The staff could get commitments from each of several companies and then present the commitment to the residents. Once each neighborhood selected one service, then the number of trash trucks on their streets would be minimal, and the residents would have still retained their right to choose. And as a side benefit, this approach would go a long way to boosting the residents' perception of the city government's working for us and with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else?
My name's Jim Ligan, 1217 North Edge, out of Kansas. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Wanted to start off by saying that I appreciate everything you guys have done. I know that this council has been on the board now for not quite a year, and there's been a lot of positive progress in Goddard that I think we should all be proud of. So thank you for all your hard work. There's been a lot of money dedicated to the new senior citizen care center, and I think that's great. And senior citizens deserve our respect and maybe deserve our support. But I've come here tonight to try to represent a different group. I'm a parent of young children. Many of us don't have time to come to meetings like this or to go out and try to popularize what we need. But I would just ask that you guys would mind that there are a lot of young families in Goddard and as money is allocated, that we keep in mind trying to allocate funds or that can help out the inner families as well. So that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Okay, if not, we'll close citizen comments. This time, I'd like to give a council a chance to declare any conflicts or communication they've had that might influence their ability to consider today's agenda items impartially. Get on the left side here. Appointments, proclamations, reprimishes, and nominations.
We changed the buttons around on you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The City of Goddard is proud to announce that Court Clerk Kathy Schrader has been awarded the 24th, 2024 Outstanding Court Clerk Award. Each year, the Kansas Association of Court Management presents an outstanding court clerk award to someone who has contributed to their profession in ways that stand out. It's a real honor as it represents excellence not only in their home office, but statewide. It is only awarded to those who have demonstrated true leadership and dedication to the Kansas Judiciary and Municipal Court. Kathy has served faithfully and excellently for many years. She has also been a member of the Kansas Supreme Court's Education Committee for municipal courts. In this capacity, she has served a valuable role in training clerks across the state. One of her great attributes is that she's been instrumental in making it engaging and fun, especially by injecting her sense of humor and by creating activities that make the training sessions interactive. She has always been willing to step in and help whenever needed, even if it means stepping out of her comfort zone. She has launched additional efforts to promote the utilization of KACM's scholarship fund, helping more clerks attend conferences. She has been a huge asset to the municipal court in Goddard. City Prosecutor Grant Brazil shares Kathy is a municipal court wizard for managing case files with precision to ensuring that all court proceedings run smoothly. Kathy approaches her responsibilities with unwavering commitment and professionalism. She has consistently demonstrated an impressive ability to handle demanding defendants or attorneys with grace and provides assistance to both the public and the court parties with a warm and welcoming demeanor. And she's a fantastic baker to boot. Beyond her exemplary work in her own court, Kathy has taken on an important role of training municipal clerks across the state of Kansas. Her passion for sharing knowledge and best practices has strengthened the capabilities of clerks statewide, fostering a network of excellence that benefits all Kansas municipalities. Her trainings have empowered her peers, equipping them with the skills and confidence they need to serve their communities effectively. Her attention to detail and organizational skills have not only improved the workflow of Goddard's court, but have also enhanced the experience of those who rely on our services. Kathy has served on the executive board of KACM with valuable input on ideas for conferences. She's been a tremendous asset to everyone in her review of the Clerk Manual, leading her knowledge to make it a useful tool for clerks. And as a bonus to all these qualities, she's funny and fun to be around. Congratulations, Kathy. You very much earned the 2024 Outstanding Court Clerk Award.
I want to ask you really quick. When I learned the term on this toward Kathy, I was not surprised at all. I also want to say that she is a culture-billing employee here. She makes our office such a fun place to work, and she's just one of those people that you never have to worry about her getting her job done, making sure her operations go smoothly. She makes all of our lives easier and this place a lot more of a fun place to work. So Kathy, I'd like you to go up with the city council. We're gonna take a group picture in front of the logo if you don't mind. And then we need a speech.
I'll say, I'll just make this with my picture. I'm not gonna say a word.
All right, one, two, three.
One more round of applause.
I don't speak.
Will you bake a cheesecake then, please?
I can do that.
Kathy, since you won't speak, I'm gonna say something. I've only been involved in the city here in the nine months. And you're kind of the glue that kind of holds the monthly meals that the staff has together. You keep the guys in the police department kind of moving up and down the hall and keep everybody and things in order. And you have a quick wit and a great sense of humor. And I do appreciate the fact that it's just you're another example of the type of people that we have working here on our staff. And I just personally want to say thank you for the way you've made me feel welcome. I know that I have a worse sense of humor sometimes, too. And I think you dish it out and you take it as well as anybody, so. But I do appreciate you so much and the work that you do. I just wanted to personally say thank you. And I hope that anyone else on the staff or the council will do the same. Everybody's shy. But again, congratulations. Moving along to item G. See, I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda for this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Audrey. I already made the motion. Brent, second. Most in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion to prepare these. Moving down to. No unfinished business? No business? City Administrator, great for set.
Kathy, there's no profanity in this presentation, so you might not enjoy it. You can leave if you want. All right, agenda item I1, the Goddard Apartments IRB hearing. So if you guys recall, earlier in the year, late spring, the council approved a development agreement with Goddard Housing LLC as for a Class A apartment development over within the Starbond District. One of the key components within that development agreement was the creation of a reinvestment housing incentive district. I won't bore you with all the finer details, but one of the agencies in our area vetoed the ability of the city to create that RHID. So back to the drawing board for the development team as well as the city to try to put together a package that would make the project come to life. So a new development agreement will be before the city, probably within the next one or two city council meetings. But the purpose of this evening is just to have the IRB hearing. If you have a hearing, we may consider a resolution for the IRB at the next city council meeting along with the development agreement. As is typical with an IRB, there's property tax abatement for 10 years as well as sales tax on the cost of construction. It's not unlike other similar projects in our region. Typically, that's what we're seeing with Class A apartment developments. So again, this evening, just the hearing. There's a small publication cost to give notice for the hearing. Here are the recommendations from your city staff. I would be glad to take any questions. And my colleague Kevin Cowan with Gilmoreville, the city's bond council, is here as well if you have any questions for him. Thank you.
Okay, entertain a motion to open the public hearing related to the IRB Goddard Housing Project. Make a motion. Keep makes the motion.
Aye.
Chris, the second. Some of those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We'll open here. I did not prepare any long speeches that fill in any gaps. You know, the housing situation we have in Goddard, we're void of apartments. So this is something that's been worked on for a long time. I think even before Chris and I came on council. We'll just keep moving this along and hopefully we can have, you know, fill that void. That hopefully leads to other things as it relates to commercial development. If there are no comments, entertain a motion to close the public hearing at this point.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Keep makes the motion.
Second.
Chris, the second. Some of those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Let's play the hearing, Anderson.
There'll be others. Okay, Arbor Creek South, Rustic Creek. Arbor Creek Center Projects, temporary notes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brent, you're Brent, Seapool Public Finance, Wichita Financial Advisor of the City. This is Arbor Creek South, Phase 1, Rustic Creek, Phase 2, and City Center Project Temporary Notes 2024-5. The -5 part of that, I think you've been through this more times before this year so far. So you're experts at this point. Some background, excuse me. On September 3rd, the city council accepted petitions and adopted resolutions to authorize infrastructure projects related to the Goddard City Center Development, which is Casey's General Store. The project consists of sanitary sewer improvements, street improvements, and water line improvements, totaling $266,000. And then on September 24th, the city council accepted petitions and resolutions to authorize Arbor Creek South, Phase 1 improvements, consisting of pecking improvements, water distribution, stormwater sewer, and sanitary sewer, as well as some other improvements on the whole development rather than just one phase. And then also Rustic Creek, Phase 2. You may recall at your last meeting that the bids were open and were higher than what was the original petition. So that resolution repealed the old resolution, and now we're issuing temporary notes for the difference with that. We're including it for this, makes it more cost-effective. With cost of issuance and capitalized interest, make the interest payments on the notes in the principal amount is estimated at $1,075,000. These are actually, these are the first of three active steps in the process. The second step is tonight to adopt the resolution authorizing the sale of general obligation temporary notes, 2024-5, to provide interim finance for the construction of projects. With approval, Seapool Public Finance will prepare the preliminary official statement, solicit a credit rating, and advertise the note sale to potential purchasers, banks, underwriters, and investors. We expect to get the SP1+ rating, as we've gotten in the past, on the temporary notes. Step 3 will be at a future meeting to conduct the note sale and accept the best bid from the purchaser providing the lowest true interest cost to the city. The note sale resolution for consideration tonight authorizes us to move forward with the sale. The resolution schedules a competitive sealed bid on October 21st. We'll come to your meeting that night and explain the results of the sale. How do you consider accepting the best bid from the purchaser providing the lowest take for true interest cost and then adopt the note resolution? After the notes close, scheduled for November 13th, proceeds will be available to construct the projects. As always, once the projects are complete, notes are near maturity, final costs will be calculated, and 100% of costs will be assessed to the property owners and to the city in large. Property owners will have an opportunity to prepay any and all their assessment. If they're not prepaid, GEO bonds will be issued and will be paid back in 20 installments with interest. Financially, the cost of issuance for the notes will be paid for. No proceeds, which will eventually be rolled into the final costs and be paid for by the property owner to improvement district. Semi-annual interest payments will be paid for capitalized interest, also included in the financing. Legally, the note sale resolution and supporting documents are authorized by the project authorizing resolutions 24-40 through 24-42, that's for City Center Projects, 24-45 through 24-53, and that's Arbor Creek South and Rustic Creek, and Special Assessment Statute, Cancer, 12-6A, 01-S. Documents were drafted by your bond counsel, Kevin Cowan, Gilmoreville, and I've been with you, myself, and your city attorney right back. Your staff's recommendation is to adopt the note sale resolution authorizing for sale of general obligation temporary notes, Series 2024-5, of the City of Goddard, Kansas. And that's on this book. And I'd be happy to stand for any questions you may have.
Questions? Good news?
You're very good.
Just the next step. Step 2. All right, I'll entertain a motion here.
Make a motion to adopt the note sale resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation temporary notes, Series 2024-5, of the City of Goddard.
Keep makes the motion.
I second.
Chris, the second. Some of those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion, Karen?
Thank you.
Thank you. If anybody's watching their phones and knows the score is, if you're just kind of head sick, let us know.
If you guys could just turn your phones around.
I wasn't gonna say that.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm very excited to bring forth this item to you this evening. Again, this, I'm presenting some very brief information before we have the public hearing on the resolution of intent for a single hauler solid waste and recycling. So again, looking back just back in August, presented information on moving to, from an open market system to a designated single hauler for the City, City of Goddard. And at that time, there was a call to hold the public hearing, which will be held this evening during tonight's meeting. Again, the public hearing is required prior to adoption of the resolution. So in the agenda packet, you do have a copy of the draft resolution. That is not, again, is not being voted on tonight, but is included for your review as part of tonight's meeting. Again, we'll hold the public hearing, and we have worked, again, with our legal counsel. We're following the timeline. That's been established through state statute to make sure that we're following every step of this process should we decide to move to a designated single hauler system. Just as part of background, also wanted to provide information on what our neighbors are doing at this time. These are, this comes from a report from Cedric County on solid waste services in Cedric County. As you'll see, there are just a handful of communities that are designated as free market or as I like to refer to as open market. There is Colwich, Goddard, Hayesville, Mays, and then Mulvane. These are the only communities in Cedric County that do not have any kind of designated hauler or single hauler services. So definitely, this is something that is familiar not only in Cedric County, in our region, but in multiple parts of the country where communities do have a designated single hauler. Again, the public hearing is tonight. Next steps, just to review those. So what would happen is we'll have the public hearing tonight, our input from the public, and then at the November, at the, November, let's see. I apologize. November 18th, city council, no, sorry, November 18th. November 18th, city council meeting will formally review the resolution of intent. City staff is recommending approval of the resolution. And again, for multiple reasons, which I'll answer some questions here in a few minutes. But also wanted to share what some of our peer communities are, what their rates are at this time. Of course, we don't know what we're going to get back if the resolution is adopted. The next step would be to create our plan for solid waste and recycling services in the community and then also submit an RFP for bidders, for companies to submit bids to provide a service to all of our residents and to the entire community. But just as comparison, as we're going through the analysis, some peer communities, for example, right now in Valley Center, their monthly rate is $1,857. In Park City, that rate is $1,368. And in Derby, Derby has three different sizes of carts that you can use for the 65-gallon cart. That monthly service breaks down to $1,555. And so just to, again, to provide some additional information as we're going through our discussion this evening. So again, going through the process, in the spring of next year is when we would review those bids. And should the city decide to move forward with it, then there would be the adoption of an ordinance that will formally accept the plan for trash and recycling services and then award the contract. Now, that contract, if it would be awarded to the hauler, they would not be able to start service. The earliest they could start service would be November 19th of 2026. So again, this is a very lengthy process. But at this time, we again are doing our due diligence and looking at this. This is a viable option to help save our taxpayers and all of our residents money on their monthly services. Again, this is the timeline. This was shared back in August. But where we are is we're at October 7th there, on the left side of the timeline, holding the public hearing, again, on the resolution of intent. And then the last thing I wanted to share with council is just some responses to questions and comments that we've heard from residents and members of the council as well. So I will go through these. Normally, I don't read slides, but I feel the purposes of tonight, I will read the slide. So a series of five questions. While you're required to get trash and recycling services under the new single hauler service, the city does not require customers to have both trash and recycling services at this time. However, economies of scale may make having both services highly desirable. Second, I believe that moving to a single hauler system is anti-capitalist and removes competition from the marketplace. If the city moves to a single hauler system, the selection of the designated hauler will be through a competitive, open bidding process, which we've already discussed. Haulers will have to submit detailed bids outlining pricing to services. Again, that would be a response to the RFP that the city would draft and publish. The city council will select the hauler that provides the best services for the best cost to the community, and the city will sign a contract for services for a specific period of time. The designated hauler will be required to serve all customers within city limits during the time of the contract, which most likely be three to five years. Probably recommend three years at this point. All area haulers will be able to submit bids again when it comes time to establish a new contract for trash and recycling services. So even if we do decide to move forward, we select a designated hauler. That doesn't mean that they're gonna be the designated hauler for the rest of time. It just means that for that specific period of time of the contract, that they would be awarded that service. Next question. I have concerns that my trash and recycling will not be picked up and that the level of customer service may decline during the contract period. If the city signs a contract with the designated single hauler, that hauler will be required to meet all the terms of service put forth in the contract. Missed trash and recycling pickups will be remedied by the hauler. If a resident's trash or recycling is not collected on the designated date, they will be able to call the city and let them know. I have personal experience with this, coming from Valley Center. Unfortunately, there were times when our designated hauler in Valley Center would miss a bin or two, and they would call City Hall, call city offices, and then city staff would call our designated hauler, and they would go out and pick up that bin. So you have experience with that? The city would then, again, contact the hauler, have them come out, pick them up. If terms of the contract are not met, the city will have the authority to force services to be met through financial pressure. to be met through financial pressure or other means. City would also reserve the right in a contract to amend or end said contract if terms are not satisfied. Couple more. I have concerns that the hauler will increase the trash and recycling rates at random and I won't be able to fight this increase. If the city moves to a single hauler system, the contract with sent hauler will clearly outline the price structure for trash and recycling services during the period of the contractual agreement. Payments for trash and recycling services will be paid directly to the city as part of the utility bills. Customers will not receive service bills from the designated hauler and will not make any payments directly to the hauler. The city will use the trash and recycling funds collected from customers to pay the hauler. And lastly, I don't think moving to a single hauler system will help preserve the city's streets or reduce noise or air pollution in the community. If the city moves to a single hauler system, it will reduce the number of routes and trash and recycling trucks that operate in the community because there will only be one hauler instead of the current four operating independent routes and trucks. Reducing the number of trucks operating in the city will reduce the amount of wear on the streets, which will save money on future road repairs. Furthermore, reducing the number of trucks operating in Goddard on a weekly basis will lower the noise and air pollution generated by said trucks. So again, just some responses to common questions and concerns that we've heard of staff. Again, very minimal cost for publishing the public notices. Legal has been, again, has been reviewed. The resolution has been reviewed by the legal counsel and is prepared to move forward with that. Lastly, our recommendations for this evening, again, motion to open the public hearing, gather comments, close the public hearing, and then if the governing body so chooses to have a discussion or a comment amongst yourselves, and then again, the next steps will be in November, we will formally bring the resolution of intent to council and we can further our discussion then and then again, it will be our recommendation to move forward with that. And I would just make a quick, if you look at the draft resolution itself, under section one, it says, "This statement of intent does not obligate the city to pursue citywide recycling or residential and commercial solid waste and recycling services, but it provides notification of consideration as such." So again, just by adopting the resolution, you're not locking yourself into anything. The city is not being locked into any kind of contract or obligations. It is just the next step in the process of looking at moving towards a single hauler. So just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that, that this is just the next step. Even after the RFP is published and the plan is drafted at that meeting in May, May of 2025, if after the bids are presented to city council, council decides that this doesn't make sense for our residents, then we stop the process there. Again, this is just the next step, but city staff feels very strongly that this is the best course of action to see this through to at least the point where we can solicit bids, open them and present them to council to see where cost savings may be effective for the residents of our community. And with that, I'll stand for any questions before opening the public hearing.
I think everybody wants to go watch some ballgame or something.
Fair enough. All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks, all right. I'll obtain a motion to open the public hearing.
To make the motion.
I'll remake the motion. Keith the second, so always a favor, say aye. Hearing is now open for public comment. Proposed resolution to do make the citywide trash service, so we call it trash now.
Jim Olligan, 1217 North Black Edge. This is the, for any reason I came tonight, let's talk about this. I've lived in four different states and five different regions, Wichita and Goddard are the only place I've lived where we don't have a single trash hauler. And I can say hands down, I've got the best service here than anywhere else I've lived. Everywhere else, it's a single company, you have to use them and you get the service you expect from a monopoly. So wanted to talk about some of my concerns. One, I believe that moving to a single hauler system is anti-capitalist and removes competition from the marketplace. One of the questions we just discussed, but if the city moves a single hauler system, selection of designated hauler will be through by the open bidding process. My question there is, how many trash hauler companies are going to be capable of doing the entire city of Goddard? If you looked at that, I just had a brief moment to look at that chart that was up on the screen, it looked like every single city had selected Waste Connections. I can say my neighborhood lease, 95% of the homes are Waste Connections. I would expect if we do bid, there are Waste Connections, would probably be one of a few bidders. Going through time though, three years from now, five years from now, nine years from now, 15 years from now, we'll see the bidders slowly drop off, see if there are any other bidders at all. So I don't necessarily see this as being a monopoly the first time, though I wouldn't surprise me. Over time, it'll become a monopoly. It would be hard for any company to buy the truck, to just have the trucks and the people standing by to choose, of course, to make a size and have it grow even more. I have concerns that my trash and recycling will not be picked up and the level of customer service may decline during the contract period. Again, any time you have a monopoly, if service is going to decline, that's the reason, that's one reason for service is to try to get your business. Understand the service would be in a contract, but there's fulfillment terms of a contract and there's provided customer service and those are two different things. And then I, there's concern about the, so there wouldn't be a relationship anymore between the trash haulers and the people they serve us, between the trash haulers and the city. So I've heard how you went through an issue, we're not calling trash hauler like right now, if I have an issue, I call Waste Connections, they take care of it. If not, I go to somebody else. I think the same process would be, we would have to call the city, which then takes up resources of the city staff, and the city staff has to call the waste hauler and seems like that'd be more management on the city side as well, plus that'd be another bill the city would have to collect. So for those reasons, I urge you guys not to go any farther. I understand as well as is one small step in the process, but everything starts off with a small step, everything's a step. And as things go from one step to another, they gather momentum and I encourage you to stop at the small step and not take a series of small steps that could lead to being set with a single hauler, as I would call it, a monopoly. Thank you.
Sir, what was your name again?
Jim Kelly.
Thank you, Jim. Here, are you still on, come on in?
I've been supplying trash cans to Goddard for about 20 years to my areas of Goddard that I provide trash cans for in my property. And I went through waste management, I went through Waste Connection, and it seems like, I understand, we need to give the smaller trash services a chance at this. The big guys are capable of taking care of Goddard, but let's bring my gallons trash service. I was doing the Waste Connection Waste Management, my rights just went through the roof. The guy refused to pick up my trash out my yard, so I told him to take his trash truck down at my trash can out of the yard. I had Alan's appliance come in, or Alan's trash service, I saved $1,500 in one year going through this process. He's a small outfit, but he does a heck of a job. I say give the little guys a chance, including him, the smaller companies, to have a chance to have the Goddard business. Because like I say, the big guys are just suffocating the little guys. Like I say, I can call them there and they treat me right, they call me back. It's not like I gotta go ask somebody, or yes, I gotta ask somebody, when I call them to give me an answer, I'm off the phone. And this, the situation we're talking, I have to call the city, the city's gonna have to get on the phone and try and get ahold of Waste Management, they're not gonna know who to talk to, they're gonna get back with me. We're talking, instead of 30-second conversation, a week conversation. So I'm just saying that let's, as far as the traffic on the roads, coming into town, I saw a car moving out here with semi-trucks, they're driving on the roads. I see the trash, semi's going to the schools with food services, they're driving on the roads. I mean, there's no way you're gonna prevent heavy traffic on the roads, it's a road. Everybody's gonna drive. You're gonna have semi-trucks come down the road, we're gonna stop the semi-trucks from coming into Goddard? I mean, you're only talking a few other trucks coming to Goddard on the road. So I don't think stopping the trash truck coming to Goddard is gonna save the roads. It's something you need to look at because there's other trucks coming to Goddard, gonna sit on Main Street all day long, watch trucks come to Goddard. That's, I'm just saying, I don't think, I think we should think of it like it is, because if I have trouble with the trash service, I got the capability to tell them to get off my property, I'm gonna go to another trash can. And this situation, we're locked in, we're gonna sign a contract, this is your trash service for you. So it just gives control of the customer and your trash service. Because I've had my experiences with trash cans. Again, like I said, I've been paying for trash for 30 years in Goddard, about 20 trash cans. And Alan's appliance, or Alan's trash service has treated me right for about 15 years. And I hate to leave that guy. He's an honest guy, he's not a big company, but he's, he's pretty good, he's getting there. He has the red trash cans in Goddard. So when you drive down the road, there's a time his trash cans weren't in Goddard. You know these trash cans he's replacing? Waste Connection, Waste Management. So drive down Goddard, look at all the red trash cans. Okay, I'm just saying, let's keep it open, let's not get locked into one service. I can give you a quick idea. He charges $75 for a trash can. If I get, if I get another trash, it's $37. This is for three months, is what he's charging. Yeah, my first trash can's $75, and then the next following trash can, of course, I have mine all in one area, it's $37. Now, if we've done with Waste Connection, Waste Management, I gotta pay the same rate to my 20 trash cans, that's $75 fees. I don't know if they're gonna give us a discount. Like I said, this is new, we're all new on this, so I'm not sure exactly what the prices are gonna be for a guy that buys 20 trash cans in one spot. See? So let's think about that, let's get Alan's a chance if you're gonna open a bid. He's a good guy. I like him. You'll like him too, he's straightforward. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to address the council this evening? I'll obtain a motion to close the public hearing, if there's no one else.
I was gonna ask one other question, is this still open?
Yes, it's here pulling up.
Another thing that came to mind while I was sitting back there, is what about dumpsters? You got dumpsters where the trash truck picks up the trash in the dumpster. We're talking about residential trash cans? I'm very concerned about it because it's, I like to keep trash cans in my location to keep my areas clean. And the price of trash is very expensive sometimes, when you see the price of trash right now. What are we gonna do about dumpsters? Like Taco Bell, like Pizza Hut, like City Hall, I don't know, how many dumpsters you got? But those trucks are gonna have to run on Goddard streets too. So just because we're gonna sign a contract has me concerned about the dumpsters. Yeah, so let's keep an open mind on this trash urging thing. It's kind of to the benefit of, let's give everybody a chance, you know? And let the customers deal with the trash service. Okay. Dumpsters.
Very good, thanks.
Appreciate you.
I'll obtain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make the motion to close the public hearing on proposed resolution of intent.
Chris has made a motion.
Second.
Aubrey second, so always a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Time for general discussion for the bench. Keaton, start with you, what are your thoughts?
Why don't you start with me?
You're the mayor in charge of vice.
Yeah, yeah. Now, you know, I've said in the first time we talked about this, I'm not crazy about it, I'm not really in favor of it, but I'm willing to kind of see what it would actually look like, because right now it's all theoretical. So I know Jim was urging us to stop right here and I get where you're coming from, but I don't think, sorry, I'm getting chief's updates right now, I'm sorry. We got the discussion, that's all. I think we just have to be willing to be strong if we get to a point where we don't want it and we've gone down and allowed that momentum. I think we are a council that's strong enough to put our heels in and stop if we need to. So I'm willing to continue, but I do have some hesitancy.
Back and forth, Chris taking the other end.
Will there be more public hearings through this process? Will there be more opportunities for people to come and speak because these were all very valid points this evening? And so through this process, as we keep, will there be opportunities?
No, excellent question. So again, going back to the timeline, how this will work is if the resolution of intent is adopted on November 18th, what will happen between November 18th and into next year is we will also, it won't be a formal public hearing, but we will gather additional information from members of the community on what they want the trash recycling plan to look like. We can also garner public input regarding the RFP as well, should we decide to go that route. But again, what would happen is once the RFP is officially submitted, that will take place, and you'll see on March 17th, 2025, approve the RFP with responses due by May 1st. So again, at March 17th, at that city council meeting, is when city staff will ask city council to approve the RFP and allow us to collect bids. And then you'll see on May 19th, there will be a formal public hearing, which will be made known to the public on April 10th, is when that public notice will be published. But on May 19th, as you can see on the timeline, there'll be a public hearing on the, what is called the Organized Solid Waste and Recycling Plan. So again, that's where the plan will be reviewed and there will be a public hearing. We'll also submit or share with council the bids that we received in response to the RFP. If council decides to move forward, following that public hearing on May 19th is when an ordinance would be established to formally adopt the plan and to award a contract to the single hauler. So there will be another public hearing, but before that public hearing, we'll definitely want to gather further input from the public as we're drafting the plan and the RFP for services. So for example, Mr. Hilliard's comment about dumpsters, we want to make sure that we include a section in the RFP where they're going, where the bidder, the hauler, would submit information on bids for residential carts, commercial bins, commercial dumpsters, is there going to be bulk waste, what does that look like? All of those questions would be answered and addressed in the plan, which we can solicit sharing information from the public as well as gathering input as well. But that would go into the plan as well as the RFP so that when we're opening those and submitting them to council, we know specifically what we're getting in terms of service from the selected hauler if we decide to go that route.
Councilman, if you don't mind, my adding, as you saw tonight, we had a citizen speak during our regular citizen comment. Councilman, if you don't mind, my adding, as you saw tonight, we had a citizen speak during our regular citizen comment period. So, you know, the first, third Monday, and the fourth Tuesday, folks will be able to come and address the governing body at each of those times as well, so.
Um, well, I would just say from my perspective, I agree with Keaton. I'm not excited about this, um, necessarily. And to Jim's point, um, you know, the middleman, the city staff is already, um, has a lot going on with the things that we have going forward. And to add another thing, in my opinion, um, is just another thing. And this is an opportunity for the customers to still be able to choose who they want. Um, and that's where I, my stand.
Ryan?
I can tell you. Right, well, I tell you, I have Waste Management at my business, and then, uh, I had Waste Management here in Goddard, and then my neighbors are like, man, Waste Connections, you probably save half. And I switched to Waste Connection, and it's like thirty-six dollars every three months. At my home, you know? So, uh, it's, it's nice. I, I still have Waste Management in my business and Waste, Waste Connections here, but.
Thirty-six every three months?
Yeah. That's what I'm like, I'm like, man, if we go to the seven round, my bill goes up off the piss.
You got a bleed button?
No, I mean, I agree.
I'm, I'm a real big fan, we can pull a plug on this thing.
Yes.
Right, I'm, I'm curious. You know, for me, I'm a big fan of Allen &amp; Sons as well. I use them, I use them often. I, I still got Waste Connection cans in my backyard, they won't pick them up. You know? You know? Um, I'm curious to see what the rates are. You know, I just kinda wanna see that, you know, because there are people out here in our community that are on fixed budgets. Very, very tight budgets. And if you could save them half of a cost, you know, we'll let the public decide. You know, that's the way we look at it, but, um, I'm curious to see what the rates are. You know, if you get down, if somebody's spending thirty-six bucks a month, what if it comes back at eight dollars? You know what I mean? Um, and we get that locked in. That's what I'm curious about.
Right, and so again, that would be on May nineteenth of next year. So that May nineteenth city council meeting is when we would again review the plan, um, and then also review the bids. At that point, if it, this, these are very competitive, if, if it's going to be a great fit for a vast majority of the community, what would happen is that we would adopt the ordinance moving to the single hauler system and approve the award of the contract to the single hauler. So again, even up through May nineteenth, we're not locked into anything. This is still very much a discovery phase. We're gathering information from the public. We're putting together the plans, submitting the RFP to the public. Now, that RFP would be, um, we can definitely directly submit the RFP to Allen &amp; Sons, or Waste Connections, Waste Management. The RFP would also be published on the city's website as well. And so if there are specific companies that, uh, council or members of the public want us to make sure that we get it to, then we're more than happy to submit the RFP directly to them, understanding that we're sending it, submitting it to multiple companies, as well as pu-, uh, publish, publicly posting it on the city's website.
Right. And so that's why, that's why I'm, I mean, I'd like to just see a wee split of the bids coming out to be, I mean, coming out to be, you know, it's not worthwhile, and it's full of blood on this thing. You know what I mean? That's, that's what I'm getting at.
Ryan? I just wonder why I'm standing so much for Trump City.
Why didn't this cost about ten dollars?
Oh, yeah.
I didn't talk yet.
You can talk about that. I just think it's interesting, even in the, the differences between Dirty Valley Center and Park City. I mean, eighteen, thirteen, fifteen. Maybe tell you a line in this one.
I got one other thing I'd like to throw in if I could.
Probably not.
Not?
After the meeting.
I'm out of time.
Yeah, if you don't mind. We start that and things go. I guess. I think that part of the reason Goddard doesn't have this type of hauling system and service is that people in our community want to be able to have their voice and say and negotiating these things on their own. And I guess I've kind of, as I've listened to this tonight and moved over, we've got a lot of other things we're doing right now. We can always come back and pick this up later. But I think for right now, we've got enough other things in the hopper that I, I'm just at a point where I'm gonna have to take on a personal responsibility and make some phone calls and make some changes. But I think as far as the city, we're spending our resources to do this. I think at this point, I, I'd vote to pass on this and, and, uh, do some other things that I think are, are greater priorities in terms of need. That's kinda where I landed at this point, asking.
Looking at annual hurdle hopes.
I understand. I know, but I'm just saying, at this point, that's kinda my thoughts, and, uh, voting, we are kind of tapping it. It's kind of like a, it's, it's kind of like a T-ball game with a, a bunch of six and seven-year-olds. We're not keeping score, but all the kids know what the score is, so. And I guess with that, I, I'm still, in my mind, I think, if, if I were to decide right now, I would just, I'd vote down and go and do something else. We don't have time to think about it, so.
Definitely, yes. So again, just as a brief recap, now that we've held the public hearing, uh, the next step will be at the November eighteenth city council meeting. We'll formally bring to you the resolution of intent and have a discussion from there. And if there are any questions in the interim, of course, city staff stands ready to answer those questions and help out with research as we can.
Mayor, I have one last thing.
Sure.
Uh, one of the comments being, I'm hearing from the dais is a concern about staff resources. So between now and the next council meeting, when we bring the resolution, we'll kinda paint a little bit clearer picture as to what that looks like. Maybe we haven't spent enough time elucidating on what that time resource actually is. So we'll, we'll bring some more information on that too. And if you guys have other things you wanna learn more about on this, of course, send us emails or call, and we'll dig that up.
Well, and then in terms of, in addition to just the starting point, but just once you're in it, then the, the number of calls, complaints, there, there's a, there's a time element in that going forward too that, uh, I think we need to consider.
We just don't forward all the calls to Keaton's though. He, he wants to hear the update.
Yeah, with all my extra time, I'll be sure to answer that.
Mayor, having come from a community that has this, um, I have a pretty good perspective on what the staff time looks like, so we'll.
Sure.
I want you guys to know what that is, so we'll, we'll bring that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, moving forward to item number four. Annual goals reviewed.
I don't know, may it city council, if you don't mind, I'm a, a floater here, I'm gonna come over here a little bit. I got a lot of text on the slides, I'll try to breeze through this. Hopefully, we make it home by halftime, but I promise this. Uh, annual goals, they were established during our workshop in January. We had a special meeting. Uh, we included a review process of the twenty fifteen through twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan, as well as the strategic plan and the business plan. Uh, we separated the annual goals at that time by the adaptive goals, action goals, and some technical goals. We did not have a progress check in the last quarter, budgeted street projects and some other things slowed us down a bit. So we hadn't checked in since May, but here we are today. And the purpose of this agenda item was just to show you kinda where we're at. Uh, real quick on the adaptive goals. Uh, goal one, amenities and entertainment. Two, high-quality parks and rec. Three, beautification of public space. Four, connectedness. And five, housing. You can see some of the sub-actions within each of those. Uh, these come directly from the business plan, but we were able to do some modification from the business plan because of the progress that had been made on those goals over the years. Uh, the action goals. Royal Water District four, uh, we have our agreement executed. Harland's team is feverishly designing the pump station. I think here in the next week or two, we should have some design plans finalized. Uh, last time we did a check-in, uh, for goals, that had not been completed yet. So getting that agreement executed, the accomplishment. North Park, uh, you can see here the most recent updates. Uh, we should have a presentation to city council in November. Our park committee gets together at the end of this month to kinda finalize things. The North Park master plan, as well as Phase One schematic design. Uh, we anticipate that we will have construction documents ready to advertise for bid at the end of quarter one. Hopefully, we're talking about a geo bond, uh, late spring, early summer. And we are building a new North Park that's been in the works since twenty fourteen, uh, by middle of next year. So glad to have the ball moving on that monumental project. First public community that we're aware of north of US fifty-four. The water pressure model master plan, uh, I set a November fifteenth deadline with professional engineering consultants on that. Uh, they did the flow testing with our public work staff in August. Last month, they completed the calibration of their models. So now they're taking all of those works, putting it together, delivering us the final product. Uh, a lot of these items are a big part of our ten-year capital improvement program, which we hope to get approved by the end of the year. Uh, we're kinda slowly bringing all that to center, and, uh, we're excited about that. The stormwater drainage assessment, you'll see we got the fee approved in July. Uh, we had Canvas Royal Water Association come out and do some mapping to help us uh, get the parts of our system that weren't mapped, mapped. Pretty much everything that is south of Kellogg exclusive of like Arbor Creek, uh, but mostly old stuff. Uh, we didn't have any of that system mapped because it just wasn't a thing back then. Uh, the skater system project, uh, I believe that the RFP has been advertised, and those proposals will be due this month. So that is a big capital project. Maple Street walking path, it's a county project. Uh, I think twenty twenty-six is actually gonna be more realistic for that, I should have updated that number. Uh, one eighty-third turn lanes, positive update in that regard. Uh, they will be advertising that for bid this week, about a thirty-day, forty-day turnaround. We'll have contracts by the end of the year. If you're a member of council, directed staff for the sixty-day versus ninety working days option. So we are shoving it down on the, um, north side there, uh, for a period of sixty days. So, uh, folks won't even wanna go in that direction, but it'd be like pulling a Band-Aid off, we'll get it done a lot faster. So, uh, hopefully, we are starting that work sometime in the first quarter next year. I anticipate that would be a feasible schedule based on the bid letting. Uh, twenty twenty-four roadway projects. So we are anticipating them to start paving, uh, the rest of First Street this Wednesday through Friday. Uh, unbeknownst to us, schedules changed, I guess for the better. And, uh, they started paving today, and they should be done tomorrow. So residential street's almost done there. North Frontage Road, they are working on the final phase at the very latest. It will be done by Friday, November first. It has been a long construction season, uh, for all those involved, so we're super excited to be wrapping some of those up. Uh, the Wayfinding and Welcome My Name Is Sine, if you guys know, we've had a couple of bid awards for those. Now the tough part begins, and that is weaving through the multiple layers of bureaucracy that are the higher units of government. And my colleague Ryan is doing a wonderful job of that, and hopefully, we will have those in the ground early next year. Uh, downtown streetscape project, so we actually have a meeting with an architectural firm tomorrow uh, to start doing a little more advancement of that. That's a CIP project. At this point, we're just trying to get some preliminary concepts and some rough estimating to incorporate into CIP. Uh, lobbying program budget and for grant dollars and legislation. Uh, you can see that we've applied for a few grants. Uh, we did hit on one of those. Hasn't been contracted yet, so we won't share too much about it yet. Uh, the website revamp and phone app, uh, Ryan has been heading that committee of city staff people, and they have been meeting with the firm about monthly, uh, to continue to advance that project. It's taken longer than I anticipated, but that's just, uh, I guess, the pace with which those folks move. So hopefully, we'll have our new website up by the end of the year, and the new phone app cooking as well, so that'd be pretty neat. Single stream, uh, trash contract, that was a, a goal that was set during that January session. As you know, we had the hearing this evening, resolution in November. Uh, identifying property for additional public facilities. We've got one that is pretty close, we're looking at others. Uh, this is some advice that's been given to us by, uh, folks in nearby communities that have undertaken a huge growth, um, within a short amount of time. You need to have some property in some strategic locations for public facilities, whether it's infrastructure-related or literally buildings. And so, uh, we're just looking at some little places here and there where we think it might be strategic for us to have property. Uh, the mayor's advisory council has met three times this year. I anticipate we will meet one more time at least before the end of the year. It's been a fun group to get to know and to receive feedback on important issues to our community. On the raised ramp for Gov. Galleria Road, we actually did not apply for that. However, we did get funding for the project with which we were gonna apply for that with, so. Uh, the e-ramp, I just, uh, had a conversation with the good old EPA folks today, uh, hoping to get some feedback on that application. We weren't awarded this round, but we will do, uh, some updating of those docs and submit that next year. That is for the pedestrian bicycle overpass US fifty-four, so we're gonna keep going to bat there. Salt storage, I wanna type this up, it's ironic, I had, believe we had no progress today. Brooke shared with me that we've got a plan in place, so next time we come around, you'll get a little bit more detail on that. Litter Park lighting, disc golf tournaments, uh, or improvements, and then the feeder sidewalk bridges. So the, uh, parking was completed last spring. We actually filled some rock in there today, getting ready for Fall Fest. Uh, disc golf improvements were completed. A wonderful job by our park attendants and some of our other public work staff on getting that done. We had a PDGAB tour tournament last spring, and we've got another one coming up next month, so that's always exciting. Uh, feeder sidewalks, staff has that well underway. Uh, the Litter Park lighting project, the directional boring is pretty much completed, but we ran into a little snag, uh, in one area of the park where there were some, uh, large pieces of concrete rubble from a different generation. So we are working to figure out how to finish that out in lieu of those obstructions. Uh, we'll get it taken care of at some point, so. Beans Park, Harland's crew was out surveying last week. Our primary goal is to complete the grading and excavation plan. Uh, so that drainage issue is cured prior to the twenty twenty-five cool season. Technical goals, uh, some hiring. Uh, our city planner's been on for a while now, of course, Ryan. Uh, we hired two public work slavers, but we did lose one a few months ago. We anticipate hiring another one at some point in the near future. Uh, we have a new customer care clerk who's been doing tremendous. Uh, that's been a part of some succession planning with some retirements coming up. And then, of course, we're looking to add another police clerk in, uh, first party next year. Other comment that you guys had asked of us was to put more community development-type updates in the Goddard Glance, Miller U-Cops, et cetera. All that's being done. Uh, there was a conversation about connecting medical lodges to Walnut. We've had some eyes on that over there, and we're not so sure that that's the best idea with the stormwater drainage system that's in play. Uh, so we might be considering some other options with that, but that one we may just let lie for a while. Technical goals, we got the personal manual updated, financial policy updated. Uh, we finally got rid of the old furniture that had been around for a stone age. Uh, we've got a lot of activity on some of these regional associations that help guide dollars into our community, REAP, OSCAC, and others. And then we had one annexation completed last month, and we anticipate more coming. And with that, I just ask if you have any questions about your goals you set in January. Um, we'd be glad to answer those. That's all you have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just had a nice to Amanda Edwards with ceremonial beverage procedure. It's basically a housekeeping item. Uh, in reviewing the city code, staffs come across items that are either outdated, or simply need to be cleaned up regarding, uh, the proper procedures. The current code states that the city clerk's office shall provide copies of all ceremonial beverage applications to the police department, the fire department, and the city county health department when they are received. And, uh, the police department will run a. And the police department will run a check on all the applicants, and the fire department and health department will inspect the premises. The departments will then recommend approval or disapproval of applications within five working days of the department to exceed the application. This procedure has been reviewed by Robert Corcado, city attorney, and Hennet House drafted an order submitting Section 3205 of the city code to amend the procedure that allows the clerk's office to review all applications to ensure their compliance and conduct a background check on new Cerro Mont beverage license applications. And then after such review, the city clerk shall recommend to the city council approval or denial of the application. The remainder of the code remains the same, and then these applications will be put on the consent agenda for the city council's approval. There is no, there's a small publication fee for the publication of the ordinance, and the proposed ordinance was drafted by city attorney Robert Corcado. The recommendation is that you waive the reading of the ordinance by your vote and then adopt said ordinance. I will.
I make a motion that we waive the reading of the ordinance.
I second.
Your motion is second? I was in favor, say aye.
Aye. I make a motion to adopt said ordinance.
I second.
Got that, good. I was in favor, roll call.
Roll call.
Councilmember Hoff.
Yes.
Councilmember Fish.
Yes.
Mary Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer.
Yes.
Councilmember Howard.
Yes.
Motion terrestre. Do you think the pool would have tipped these? I couldn't know that. City administrators report IMJ. It's kind of like reports B.
Yeah, a lot of these are the annual goals, so I'll skip those that are mentioned. Upcoming meetings, we do have the first ever, that I know of, TRIGOV meeting with the Board of Education, USD 265. We'll have a few of their board officers there, a couple of their C-suite executive staff, planning commission, get everyone kind of lined up in here, have a grand old time, talk about the ways of collaborating, talk about the updates to the Davis demographic study, the potential bond issue coming up, the update to the housing study that council requested with city guidance specific info, which you guys have received. If you'd like me to put that to the top of your inbox, let me know. So that'll be coming up. Then interestingly, we have actually back-to-back meetings, Monday, October 21st at 7:00 p.m., and then our fourth Tuesday is the day after at noon. We're going to be reviewing the 10-year roadway CIP projects during that meeting on Tuesday, so felt like a good time to spend an hour together because that's a lot of important projects that we need to discuss. Linear Park playground additions, Brooke told me that the ship date estimate for the park equipment is October 23rd. He is working to set up a pre-construction conference with the general contractor. Linear Park lighting, you got the update there. City council parade of homes. Look at your calendars this evening, and I ask all you to get in touch with me tomorrow about any conflicts on the 20th or 27th. Ryan, those are Sundays, right?
Yes.
We're looking at taking about three hours of your afternoon. You guys approve millions of dollars worth of residential subdivision for special assessment financing every year. Staff felt like it only made sense that we went and actually looked at some of the houses within those developments. So we're going to get in the bus, we're going to go take a peek at all of the subdivisions that are actively constructing. Trails End, Rustic Creek, Arbor Creek, and Bridger and Maple. Ryan and Micah have been working with the brokerage firms to set up some tours of those different houses. We're trying to make it during a time of day where everyone will have had church, had lunch, maybe get the kids down for a nap, and we'll all kind of get up here and get in the van and go take a peek at those properties. So excited about that time together. I'll be reaching out tomorrow to see what scheduling conflicts you might have for either of those days. Turn lanes, you got the update. Kansas Water Office, we made a second crack at that grant. TRIGOV meeting, you got the update. Reminder on the residential well digging, the special deal, right now, we've only got one taker, so hopefully, we'll have some others. Maybe the ApHawk Water Committee could kind of help us promote that to the public. We'll get the Goddard Glance and some other methods as well. Water committee did meet on September 23rd at 7:00 p.m. Their next meeting's October 28th, and they're going to be doing the public works tour, so they can see all the facilities, see where all those dollars go to provide saving, clean, drinking water to our citizens. Community development update for September, still on the heater. Seventeen total residential building permits, 12 of those two-family, five-single-family. That equates to 29 new places for families to live in our wonderful community just in one month. $5.45 million in devaluation and about $134,000 in permit fee revenue. Kudos to Micah and the others for papering all that. Roadway projects, you got that. Skating, you got that. Fall Fest, the Return the Carnival, I hope you saw them setting up over there. It's really hard to get them to go off their annual circuit, so we should all be proud that we have the Carnival coming back to our community. It's down on the farm, Friday, October 11th through the 13th. Can't wait to see you guys out there. North Park, I mentioned that already. Upcoming agenda items, we'll have the development agreement for the Goddard Apartments. We got some master fee schedule amendments and a coinciding ordinance for community improvement fee. That would go up towards building permits. We will be reviewing the roadway CIP as mentioned. We're going to be doing some changes where we could put some more items on the consent agenda, and we're going to be doing some administrative approvals for things like street closures, sound waivers, et cetera. That way, we are easier to do business with, and we can be a little bit more quick administratively on some of these routine items. We have step three for the special assessment financing agenda item that you reviewed this evening, and I believe that that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do you have any body comments? Krista.
Starting our 10th month of the council, so it's been challenging and a really good experience, and I've enjoyed working with all of you and with the city staff. Big learning curve, but we're learning. And I want to say that I appreciate all of those who came out and spoke tonight about the trash service, and anytime you come and give us your feedback, it's very helpful, so thank you.
We've got two executive sessions, so I'm going to be quick. Two things. One, love seeing things, love seeing these updates and seeing the things that are actually getting accomplished. It's also cool that we're finally at a point where we're not just seeing things that have been approved, we're actually seeing these things come to fruition. So I'm excited to see what you get done and finally get that North Frontage Road done. With that being said, one other thing I got.
I should have told me I would let you do that last, like at the very last.
You know, I find it funny, because the first thing he says to me when he walks in, "We can duck hunt this weekend." And that was more important than the Chiefs earlier.
I'm ready, man. Aubrey, do you have any comments?
Go Cowboys.
I just want to thank the staff for all their hard work. Do appreciate some of the comments, and we'll just continue to press on. We've got a couple other items here, so let's get moving.
Sarah, can you advance?
Make a motion to move to enter executive session with consultation with the city attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship per KSA 75-43192, to receive advice regarding the matter, including the city administrator and city attorney, with a regular meeting reopening at 8:30. One.
I second.
Second, and I was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We will do that.
Are you still prone?
If you see their bins empty.